Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our one to get some. I'm guilty as well. Turn off the speaker. Welcome to our regular council meeting at 6:00 PM Wednesday, February fourteenth of Valentine's Day. We're all here instead of having dinner with our significant others, but we appreciate that the rest of you are as well. So happy Valentine's Day, everybody, including my wife. I love you. So I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'm going to pass the mic over to councillor East, who's going to read the introductory remarks and land acknowledgement and then we'll have a moment of silence that follows that.
Thank you, your worship. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional entreaty territory of the Nishenovic people, now known as the Tripola Tri-Council Compromise comprised of Bozey First Nation, Grandma First Nation and the Georgian Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre Confederation Treaty V and the Treaty XVI and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I would like to now deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit to the main entrance, point at the double doors right there. Make an immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit point behind me. Up the stairs, check the door for heat before opening. And if it is safe, exit onto the second floor, turn right and proceed out the door in front of you. Washrooms are located on the second floor to the left of the seating area. An elevator is located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone that exhibits violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. For anyone requiring a hearing assist device, please advise the clerk and she will arrange with our IT staff to provide you with the device. Recording of the meeting. Council meetings are recorded via Zoom and are posted on the town's YouTube site. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel fifty-three.
Thank you very much, councillor. I'd like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silent reflection. Before we get the meeting started. Thank you very much. So we'll jump right into section two point one, the appointment of deputy mayor and the oath of office for the town of Midland and the county of Simcoe. I have here a motion moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor East at bylaw twenty twenty-four dash ten, being a bylaw to appoint councillor Beth Prost to the office of deputy mayor, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Carrie. I'd like to call on our clerk to perform the requisite duty. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, members of the public and staff. I'd like to call upon councillor Beth Prost, who will now take her declaration of office for the seat of deputy mayor.
I, Beth Prost, have been appointed to the office of deputy mayor in the corporation of the town of Midland. Do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty the King, Charles III. And I make solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is in the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon, members of council, those in attendance. I now present our new deputy mayor, Beth Prost. And as deputy mayor post second duty, she will now take the declaration of office for the county of Simcoe.
I, Beth Prost, having been elected or appointed to the office of the county as of county councillor in the municipality of the corporation of the county of Simcoe. I do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III. And I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is in the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. You may now assume your position at the dais as deputy mayor.
Already moved your stuff over for you. There's the whacker if you need it. Oh, I got a new wingman, wing person, as it were. It's fantastic. All right, council, I have the next motion moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor Downer. Whereas councillor Beth Prost was elected as a councillor for the town of Midland for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six term. And whereas there was a vacancy for deputy mayor declared by the council of the town of Midland at its special meeting on January tenth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas council chose to direct appoint councillor Beth Prost to the seat of deputy mayor at a special meeting of council held on January tenth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the appointment bylaw was passed and enacted and the oath was given to deputy mayor Beth Prost at the regular meeting of council on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, resulting in a vacancy for councillor seat. And whereas section two sixty-two sub one of the municipal act two thousand and one states that council shall declare the seat vacant. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Midland hereby declares the office of councillor Beth Prost vacant. All those in favor? Just carried. All right, so that's the housekeeping out of the way. So just before we kick into the normal meeting, we're just gonna take a couple of minutes just to have a couple photographs, this sort of memorable moment. So stand by, please. All right, council, section three of the agenda declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any declarations relating to this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Next, I have a motion here moved by councillor Bald, seconded by councillor East, that the contents of the regular council agenda for February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four be approved. Those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. And next move by councillor Deputy Mayor Prost. I'm going to slip up a few times, so just use the whacker if you need to. Seconded by councillor Ball, that the items and related recommendations contained within the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of the following. Or it looks like four reports that were pulled. Item five point four point one CSR twenty twenty-four dash four, Huronia Airport Agreement. Item five point four point two CSR twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, council vacancy. Item five point four point three CSR twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, culture and community year end summary. And item five point four CSR twenty-four twenty twenty-four seventeen, ZBA oh five twenty twenty-three, recommendation report file number, zoning bylaw amendment application number ZBA oh five twenty-three, address eleven forty-four, Hugo Avenue. Those reports will be considered under section twelve, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration, which will include presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Council, before I call the question, is there any discussion or comments about the remaining matters? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Just a question of clarification in regards to the minutes of the special council meeting, January thirtieth, thirty first and February first. On those minutes of page eighteen of the nineteen. We amended the North Simcoe Sports and Rec Center capital budget and removed the portable generation, generation, generator, generator in the amount of five hundred thousand. And to my recollection, there was discussion determined that staff was going to see if the county is going to contribute. They're going to request that. And I'm just wondering if there's a timeline for that request and when we could be advised of the response and revisit the safety needs of that generator at that time.
Madame CEO.
A tribute to councillor McDonald. We are reaching out to the county and I will actually be at the county on Friday for a meeting, so I will do a follow up. We will, I I won't give, well, I don't have a timeline right now on when they will get back to us with a response, but the the ask has gone out and as soon as a response does does come back to us, we'll get, I will bring it back to council.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I could add that it didn't just stop at the county. It was also looking to our neighboring municipalities to co-fund. And I did broach that topic at our quarterly mayor's meeting this Monday. And I won't say it was warmly received, but you know, they didn't shut me right down. So we've got opportunities to talk before next budget and as well as maybe other grant opportunities. So to your point, it'll be back to us, but I don't know it's that we can really put a timeline on it yet just yet.
Just as a follow up comment is it would be pretty embarrassing if there was a state in an emergency and we went there as an evacuation center and weather wouldn't permit us and weather's very extreme these days sometimes. We couldn't get the one we were to borrow from the county, so it concerns me, this safety need.
That's valid. And just for those that are following along, I think we were cautioned that the county had one generator that was available for the whole county. I learned at the mayor's meeting that they believed there was three. Now we have validated the county, but three is better than one, if that's the fact, and you know, still doesn't help. The roads aren't open, but yeah. Duly noted, and if we can, if I'll tell you, if we can find funding sources mid-year, we're not gonna hold on to this until the winter, we'll come back to council for sure and say we found money. So I'd love having those conversations. Okay, I've got a couple of comments on things that weren't pulled that are in our in our agenda consent to genit, so there's just things that get passed magically because they don't get pulled for discussion and that's the heritage committee. They got, there's a lot of heavy lifting to do with the heritage filed this year. And the heritage committee was too big to form. It just wasn't enough applicants. It's kind of been a common thread. We haven't had applicants for a lot of our committees. But so this is removing the or rejigging the terms of reference to drop the number of committee attend members from nine to five. And I'm led to believe there are six current applicants in the hopper. So we can expect at our next meeting, very likely to have them before us and we can form that committee and they can get to the valuable work. There's some neat stuff left over from the last time the committee was around involving Dollar Town specifically and some neat signage commemorating that historic area of Midland, as well as new work to do with the heritage designation and the listings and there's work to do that staff really need the committee to form for. So for those people that be follow along and maybe have been had applied or wondering when we're going to talk about it, we're talking about it. It's happening next meeting. And there's three great reports in there, one about the Midland Penetaction Transit Agreement. It's been a long time in the making. Clearly, we have a transit agreement because the buses running, but the agreement needed some rejigging and it's a lot of hard work by staff on both sides, both municipalities to get to an agreement that sees us with true funding parity and equity, meaning we're not running this thing at a loss anymore, which is always nice of us to do, but you know, clearly we can't afford that. Hence the conversations we've had around a few assets. So I got to congratulate staff on both sides for the hard work to get to this agreement, which is you know, because it hasn't been pulled unless somebody decides to right away. It's going to get passed tonight and which is fantastic. So we've nailed that down and that's a lot of that work, quite frankly, has happened since Ms. Bun has joined us. Really kind of been driving, driving force of staff to get this thing done. So good work on you. Your end, as well as our planning services and building services, AKA growth departments stats for last year, you can see they're not as great as we'd like them to be, but that's through no fault of our small but mighty team. That's just a result of high interest rates and the cost of everything, making it unaffordable for builders to build. Yeah, which is unfortunate because we need those homes. But if you're interested in those stats, two really good reports were done and this is a template we're going to see repeated yearly, if not some more frequent cadence to keep us up to date and for the folks that follow along at home. So that's all I really had to add on our consent agenda. Anybody else? All right, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Next, moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor Downer, that council resolve into the committee of the whole and I pass the mic over to our newly minted deputy mayor. All those in favor? Carried. Deputy Mayor, take it away.
That was quick. So welcome to my first meeting as deputy mayor. So we'll start with public meetings and hearings. We have none, presentations, we have none. Integrity Commissioner recommendation reports, we have none. So we move right along to deputations and we have two. So the first one, I'll ask Ms. Kate Root to come up and provide her presentation. And we will set the clock for ten minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. So as Chair of the recently reformed North Simcoe chapter of Habitat for Humanity, I want to thank deputy mayor and your worship and council for this time to present this exciting project. So next slide, please. North Simcoe certainly has a crisis affecting us. When we were, the recently launched Vital Signs Report, which I think you have a copy of now. We talked with a number of people, we talked with local businesses and they told us about the challenges of trying to get employees to the area. And one of the main issues they felt besides being able to perhaps increase wages was to find affordable housing for their employees. We talked to leaders in our healthcare system and said, if you could do one thing that would make or improve the health of our community, what would it be? And the first thing they mentioned was affordable housing. We did a broad survey of the community and asked, what is the most important issue to you facing North Simcoe? And affordable housing was first on the list. You'll see from the slide that as a report that the the Housing Assessment Committee recently released in October by the county. Most of the rental housing starts at around eighteen hundred. For that, you need an annual income, household income of seventy-four thousand. Through Stats Canada Census, we know that the median income, annual income for residents in North Simcoe is thirty-eight thousand five hundred, a far stretch from the seventy-four thousand. Our youth are losing hope of ever being able to live away from home, of ever being able to be independent, certainly of ever being able to afford their own home. This, this has led them in many cases to just be disengaged from, from being involved with work at all. Next slide, please. We know from the county is trying to amalgamate a number of their units into a high rise on Rose Avenue in Barry. It costs a million dollars per unit to build those. I think they're building two hundred and fifteen and it's costing two hundred and seventeen million for that, for that high rise. Our focus for this project is to provide housing for low wage earners, people who want to live and work in North Simcoe. We hear nationally that housing availability is less than two percent. We are in crisis when it's three or less. We need every and all approaches to solve this housing crisis. We need to change how people think about housing in their neighborhood. Affordable housing needs to be somewhere and everywhere. So we're talking about tiny homes built to Ontario Building Code standards. These can offer solutions. These are prefab modular units, not trailers. Next slide, please. So adding tiny homes that fit into any neighborhood can quickly increase access to housing. Repurposing residential lots with multiple homes would make more efficient use of existing municipal infrastructure and could revitalize our own older, less populated neighborhoods. It is a way to add housing for employees who want to work in North Simcoe. Next slide, please. So our vision is to put approximately five to seven houses on a residential lot, prefabricated with efficient heat pump technology, meeting all OBC standards, less than four hundred square feet, one bedroom accessible units, housing lower waged workers. Habitat for Humanity, of course, shares our vision and we're working hard with them to make this a Habitat for Humanity project. Next slide, please. This is just one example of the kind of tiny home we may be talking about. There are many options. We've looked at many different styles, many different configurations. Next slide, please. This is a sample configuration of five units put on one residential piece of property. It can be configured in many different ways. Next slide, please. But it offers a small community within a community within a neighborhood. Next slide, please. These are just sample designs. This configuration can be made to fit many different town properties. Next slide, please. This is just a layout of one of the prefab modular homes. You can see this one is an accessible unit. It's a queen size bed, has a full washroom and living kitchen area. All for less than four hundred square feet. It's a beginning for many people. Next slide, please. We pulled some of these units together. You could perhaps put two more on top. This could look on the outside like a bungalow with a three car garage. Next slide, please. These are our attempts at a budget. We think it's quite doable. We pared it down. You'll see that the cost of those, each of those prefab homes is nowhere near a million dollars, but a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. This would house five different homes. Next slide, please. So how do we continue? We don't have all the pieces yet, but we know that Habitat for Humanity has worked with, with, with the municipality. Certainly, you've already given land to Habitat in the past. You can see that they certainly have well established experience with vetting and support of residents after they're in the homes. Next slide, please. So this is our wish list. We know there are many challenges to make this happen. And we would like to work with staff to see how we can create solutions. Most important, of course, is the gift of land to Habitat. We're already late to this issue, so we need to to work expediently to try and and create housing now. We can't do this without the municipality. We need to partner with you to make this happen. This is an opportunity for council to take the lead and create some affordable housing in North Simcoe and perhaps become a model across the North Simcoe region, across the province. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Root. I enjoyed looking at the slides earlier. Before I pass this over to council for some questions, I do want to say, I think that the ask is far beyond what our council would be able to do at this time. It doesn't mean that we can't look into it and have staff come up with something, a report. But I'll leave it to everybody else to ask some questions.
Thank you.
Councillor East.
Thank you, through your worship, deputy mayor. Okay, so obviously you have a partnership somewhat with Habitat for Humanity. Where does the county of Simcoe come into play with partnerships? Like, are they on board with this idea? Would they be willing to fund some of this? Like Beth said, I'm sure that, you know, as much as we would love to say, we would love to build buildings, but it's just impossible to put that on the tax levy. But we know that the county But we know that the County of Simcoe has already started a pilot project with these in Barry, I believe. Are they on board with supporting this financially?
We're certainly in discussion with them and are hopeful. We're not there yet. We can't do anything until we have a piece of land, which is why we're here to you tonight.
Thank you, Counselor East. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Roast. And thank you for your presentation. Your first request to acknowledge of the housing crises, I think we can all do that. There's no denying that. I would like to ask if you are aware of any sample, or not sample, the models that you showed us. Are there any in our immediate area that we could drive by and take a look at, to your knowledge?
This, so the one that I showed you is actually in Barry. So Community Builders just sent 26 Homes for Heroes to Kingston. They're a social enterprise as well, so, you know, we hope to work closely either with them or there are many prefab tiny homes coming up for sure. Habitat for Humanity does have experience in working with modular homes, prefab homes as well. So we'll lean on their experience too, but we're still in the exploratory stages. Will be much easier once we have that piece of land.
Follow-up.
Here we go. So the gift of land, you're hoping that the Town of Midland would have a serviced lot?
Yes.
That could be gifted to you. And then the tax forgiveness consideration, is that ongoing forever?
That's certainly up for discussion. It's what, the gift of land is where we need to start and then those other pieces, you know, we talk about. We see what is feasible, what is possible. It's a wish list, for sure. I did want to say, one of the pieces, when asked about the county and are they on board, we know that the county has been talking about that $30,000 grant as an incentive to put secondary suites on residential properties. We've been told having this kind of little community of five or so units, allowing residents here to see what those look like, might then encourage them, create a pathway for them to say, oh, that's how I could put one of those on my property, which again would just have that snowball effect of being able to increase housing rapidly.
Thank you. I'll get to you, Counselor Ball, right after I give Counselor East his follow-up.
Thank you, your worship Deputy Mayor. Okay, so in talks with the County of Simcoe, what do they need from you? Like, what are their expectations from you? And what do they expect you to bring to the table in these talks? Just so that we're kind of aware of where that's been heading.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to defer to my colleague, Gord McKay, as he was the person that spoke with them most recently.
Thank you very much. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I've had a number of discussions with the county on this and to be perfectly honest, right now, they do not have a program that suits this particular model. What they have said is they're, this is on the staff side, looking forward to bringing something to county council that will expand the secondary suites funding and make it available to affordable units. So in answer to your question, what they're looking for, first of all, is affordability and we will certainly match that. And it's in some of our background papers as to what that is. We're looking at a price point of $800 to $900 a month. So it's truly affordable. Beyond that, you've got to have proper maintenance, you've got to have proper building standards, and these are all baked into our proposal here. So in terms of the early discussions with county, they're very pleased with this. But to be, as I said, honest with you, there is no specific mechanism right now at the county to fund this. The promise is there though, and depending upon our good county councillors who are here tonight, hopefully that'll be in place soon.
Thank you, Counselor East. Counselor Ball?
Thank you. I just wanted to know if this is going to be a rental unit or these going to be gifted to, as a homeowner, and then I'll go from there.
Thank you. So our intent is that they be rental units. We're still working with Habitat. They are just shifting from homeownership to rental, so we still need to iron out some of that. They do have a deferred rent to own, which takes a long number of years. So these are tiny homes. We just need to get people who work here, being able to live here and contribute to the economy, which will contribute to the quality of all of our lives.
Thank you. I think tiny homes are a great idea. I've mentioned them a few times, actually. I think this is the right way to go and I believe that county council hopefully will come to the table with some funding because they definitely have given a lot to Barry and there's certainly projects like this, like the portable project on Rose Street that is very similar to the tiny house movement and what you're presenting. I think it's great. I'm glad to hear there'll be rentals because I was kind of looking at our planner because I'm sure it looks like a planning nightmare to try and sever those into different lots. So I'm glad that they're going to be rental units.
And, excuse me, in any case, I think it would be a cooperative if it were in any, thank you.
Mayor Gordon?
Thanks for your presentation, Kate. In our preliminary conversations that, well, they must span back six or eight months now, as this evolved towards tonight's, you know, pitch. I remain committed, just to let you know, this is a great idea. I really can see this happening in our community and we can be a, you know, really an example for this pilot project to be replicated, not only in our community, but all over North Simcoe and quite frankly, all over the province and eventually the country. So the tall, I guess the tall ask, there's a couple of big ones. One is a plot of land, serviced lot, you know, which could be anywhere from $250,000 to $550,000, $550,000 of value from the town's perspective. And there's also the requisite things we need to do with our zoning and perhaps some of our official plan work. And this is all stuff that, although on its face, it looks easy. Hey, just make a quick exemption to allow this neat little pilot to happen. I'm cautioned by our planning team, like, it shouldn't be like that. We really, we're in the process of reviewing all of this. And the timing for this is perfect because you'll be able to provide direct input into how we can make some of these changes in our upcoming official plan amendment and our zoning bylaw. And I'd let Mr. Parkinson speak to this in far greater detail, but the long and short of it is that I think those are the two big things we've got to deal with. It's a foregone conclusion that a lot of the fee forgiveness, specifically development charges, are already contemplated in, you know, Bill C-23 and others from the province. So that's a foregone conclusion. You know, we'd be eating that, but for a darn good cause. And we have worked closely with Habitat for Humanity in this project where you're looking after building maintenance and tenant vetting and doing all the heavy lifting. That will help a lot with the NIMBYism and some of the complaints that may follow. Because quite frankly, I had to do some soul searching myself, like, what if a house next to me burned down? You know, hopefully not, but nice people live in, but, and it was an empty lot and, you know, this was to move in next to me, you know? I need to think about that. Okay, am I going to be okay with this? Like, it's all good for me to preach this up here at council, but what if it was right next to me?
Bungalow with three-car garage.
So the fact that these can be built in different forms, or even that form that you showed us with the bird's eye view, that's very attractive and very appealing. And having that, you know, mixed, the gentle density concept, I think it is, having that mixed in to our communities that used to be all kind of cookie cutter, you know, subdivisions from 20, 30 years ago, is really what the new face needs to look like as we intensify everywhere. So I think this is checking all the boxes. The tough one for us is going to be identifying a suitable piece of land. Because I have a pretty good feeling that, you know, council can get behind this, but we need to figure out what the cost is going to be because we have to sell this to the ratepayers. And also, working with the planning department and the growth team, how can this happen? How can we speed this along, not slow-walking through the process, but also not bog it down so that this is something we're still talking about in two years, right?
Thank you.
So that would be my commitment to, you know, as, if and as this progresses, you know, I'm, I will just want to publicly state, I'm still 100% behind this thing. It's a really novel idea. And I believe this can happen here. So we got council, a staff report at some point will ensue on next steps on what we can do with this. I think there's a motion that is going to be spoken to later this evening about surplus land that may tie nicely into this and we can see what the next steps are.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you for your time.
But we're not done with you yet.
Counselor Ball has a follow-up.
Thank you. I was just going to say that we do have a report coming about land that we looked at the cost of tearing down a building on. So maybe a charity has better financial freedom or help to be able to tear down a building that is on land that we have looked at selling as basically unsellable land with this building on it. So maybe a charity is able to get funding to tear down a building on a site and that would maybe save some money for us because that's what we were looking at last meetings, was the building being of huge cost to tear down. So I don't know if you have something up your sleeve with that, but it might be an option.
Counselor Meredith?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Roast. It's a nice ring to that. I definitely do like the idea. Some of the concerns that Mayor Gordon just, I guess not concerned, some of what he said are my concerns. Depending on, you know, the proximity of the land, who's it, like he said, if it's, how would he feel if it was beside him? So there's a lot of factors that would go into the location of this property. Zoning bylaws as well, putting five units on, you know, whether it's a parcel of land. Maybe Mr. Farquharson can kind of give us a little bit of an input on that, if he wouldn't mind. I just think it's not going to happen overnight and there'll be, there may be some pushback pending on the location of this, but the need is there 100% and I can see that and like the concept drawings. It's putting it into reality. It might be a little bit harder than we think, but I may be wrong. But I, there has to be a solution and we have to start somewhere. So, but if Mr. Farquharson can speak to that, that would be great. Thanks.
Through Madam Chair, so from the planning perspective, we've committed through budget process that we would be looking at doing a housekeeping to our existing zoning bylaw. So we would be looking at these types of developments as part of that. As part of our review, we would want to see examples of where it's worked and what the standards are that was applied to that case. We also want to ensure that these types of developments, tiny homes are tiny, but can they accommodate a family? You know, we don't want to just do a development where it's an adult lifestyle community in there where it's only adults. So there's a whole variety of things that we'll have to consider as part of our review. Staff do recognize and we do support the province's initiatives to try and get more housing developed. And to do that, we do need to have our bylaws caught up. So our zoning bylaw is fairly old, so we do need to bring that up to date. So the first step for that is doing a housekeeping to our zoning bylaw to see what standards we can bring in to facilitate these types of additional types of, you know, alternative forms of development. But as part of that process, there is a public consultation. So the public will be engaged as part of that. So it will be included as part of a variety of changes to our zoning bylaw, but that would be one that we would look at. We'd have to look to see, is there certain areas of the municipality that we want to have these in? Is there, you know, do we want them right along the lake? Probably not. But, you know, that's an option that we'll look at. Is there other municipally-owned properties that, you know, maybe that are no longer in use that we'll identify through that future report that could be used? We'll be in discussion with the County of Simcoe. Right now, the County of Simcoe has a call for proposals for affordable housing. And there's a couple of municipally-owned sites right now that we're looking to put forward, which will be in a staff report coming forward, hopefully next council meeting. So that will also come with council or the county's requests for land and relief. And council will have to consider that request from the county if they want to see a development occur that they're going to develop within our municipality as well. So it's important, we need to make sure that we get it right from our planning's perspective, but working with the county as well, you know, they're the ones who build these homes and we're not home builders in the municipality. We don't put the shovels in the ground. So, but for the zoning bylaw, yes, that is very important that we do need to update that as part of our review. We're going to be looking at other examples like the city of Barry or Kingston, as Ms. Root indicated. So we'll be definitely looking for examples and the more examples they can provide us, it makes it easier for us when we're now doing our analysis to see what zoning provisions are in place and how a municipality approached it, maybe, may work here, it may not work here, but we're open to those types of suggestions. Thank you.
Okay, before you go, Ms. Root, I want to thank you again for your presentation. Every single one of us up here care about affordable housing. I think it's universal and it does need to happen. But I'd like to suggest you submit a formal ask or a formal request. And that might, we'll have that as we move forward.
Okay, and how do I do that?
You?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Roast. The best process would be to submit a formal request through either our Community and Growth Department, just outlining the requests that Habitat for Humanity is looking for.
Thank you. Will do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will now ask Mr. John Mayne to provide his presentation. I'm going to set the timer for 10 minutes.
All right, I also have the timer, just because I've been told I have too many slides. Well, thank you. Thanks for having me back. For those who don't know me, my name's Jonathan Mayne and I have the amazing opportunity to be the Sustainability and Climate Action Coordinator for the Severn Sound Environmental Association. Next slide. So just to give you an introduction, this is a little bit confusing. Sustainable Severn Sound often gets confused with Severn Sound Environmental Association. So over the last couple of years, they've returned home. So to introduce the project, the Sustainable Severn Sound Project is a collaborative amongst eight municipalities, Midland, Penetang Machine, Tiny Tay, Severn, Springwater, Oremodonte and Township of Georgia Bay in Muskoka. And we are working on the Partners for Climate Protection Program, also called PCP, administered by FCM and ICLI. And if you go to the next slide, the origin of this project comes from 2009 when the nine municipalities at the time, the Health Unit and the North Simcoe Community Future Development Corporation, collaborated on a sustainability plan signed by then-Mayor Jim Downer. Good to see you, Councilor Downer. And it talked about economic prosperity, community well-being and environmental sustainability. Fast forward to a couple of years later, the next slide is the Collocal Climate Change Action Plan. And when I was a councillor, I had the privilege of being on this committee along with Counselor Conton. And so it's very touching that we are here today in his memory. And so the Town of Midland has a climate change action plan and so now we're on the pathway. So I'll introduce that to you on the next slide. So it's a five-step process that we're working on. And step one is to review all of the energy and electricity usage in the community, come up with a Review all of the energy and electricity usage in the community, come up with a greenhouse gas baseline. Then we establish a target, how much are we going to try to reduce? And then we develop the plan and that's where we're at. And now we're in step four, we're implementing the plan. And the next step after that will be to review and see how well we've done to run the numbers and see. What areas we've done well, what other areas do we need to improve and then essentially to restart the process again. Next slide. Implementation is what where we're on today and we have a huge to do list, lots of action items, and so we're working with staff. To operationalize these items. Try to incorporate all of these action items into your capital plans, your official plan. After transportation master plans, asset management plans, so on and so forth. And I've been working very closely with Dylan Flannery and Jim Reichelt on trying to obtain grants of all shapes and sizes. We chase the money and luckily there's a lot of money for these various environmental initiatives, which has been great. So the next slide is the project area and I love this slide because it's a massive area. And usually when the SCA is up here, we're talking about watershed boundaries and it's kind of confusing. What's a watershed boundary? We like to keep it simple. These are municipal boundaries. And so it's from Minising all the way to Mactir and Midland is in the middle and all those little black dots are municipal facilities that use electricity or energy. That we're tracking as part of this project. Now, the next slide, I found this very helpful when Tracy Brocksbury at the coordinator at the time presented this to us. And it's in climate change, there's basically two families or two streams. Mitigation, which is the decarbonization, which is trying to reduce our energy and adaptation, which is preparing ourselves for the new reality of climate change. What are the climate impacts? How are we going to be affected by extreme weather, heat? And that's why we like to do initiatives that have mitigation properties and also adaptation, so planting a tree. It pulls carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, but it also provides local benefits. Rain and also heat and we'll talk about that in a second. Now, why it's important, the next slide, this is from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. And they've actually mapped out a couple of different scenarios and this is actually very troubling graph. If we don't decarbonize and we don't reduce our GHG emissions. We could potentially have five degree increase by the end of the century. And so if you see the light blue and green and blue pathway, those are the low carbon pathways. So there's a huge impetus to try to reduce our energy as much as we can as quickly as possible. Because as it gets warmer, there's going to be increased increased extreme weather events if it keeps getting warmer and warmer. So going to the next slide, this shows the kind of the correlation between. CO2 in parts per million and as the CO2 in parts per million has been increasing, we've also seen an increase in surface temperature. And so we're. We've we've surpassed 420, we're almost at 430 parts per million for CO2. And the next slide is showing where we're at currently in terms of global emissions. We emit. Fifty seven billion tons of greenhouse gases globally. And on that, on this rate, we will not get our 1.5 degree Paris Accord. We need to drastically reduce down to 33 within the next five to seven years. So we really need to work as hard as we can, as fast as we can to decarbonize. So what does that look like here in the town of Midland? The next slide. We know the town of Midland uses a tremendous amount of energy. We know our arena is a difficult facility. You have to heat it and cool it at the same time. We have amazing staff at the wastewater treatment plant, but uses tons of energy and tons of electricity. And even all the energy that we use at the municipality, our community uses even much more. We have factories, 17,000 plus people and awesome shops all across the community. So that's why it's important that we take the leadership and try to reduce as much as we can. But also that we work with the community in reducing their greenhouse gases emissions. So we'll quickly run through the next picture, the snapshot again, so the corporation. Again, like we're saying, it's basically half and half, half of our emissions is from our transportation and half is from our fleet. And so the corporate energy snapshot, which is the next one, I'm sorry. Yeah, that one. And so you can see our our fill our fleet and our transportation is about 40%. Our water wastewater uses lots of energy and then our buildings use the remaining 20. So if you flip to the community, what the community's. Portion looks like. The next slide is the energy snapshot of the community and again is basically half and half. Half of the GHGs is from transportation sector and the other half is from the facilities. And you can see we have lots of industrial factory usages, we have commercial and residential. And we also do calculate a little bit of waste and that's why it's important to reduce our waste as well. Moving to the County of Simcoe, Mayor Gordon and Deputy Mayor Post. You will now be being briefed on this. I could spend 10 minutes just talking about this great new plan from the County of Simcoe, the Corporate Climate Action Plan. And basically it shows when they run it, run the numbers, the next slide shows that it's actually cheaper to invest in your facilities, invest in your fleet. So that is energy efficient. So the the county is estimating that they'll save $130 million in 25 years. By investing in their facilities, investing in their fleet. So that's why it's a really important thing is we can't. You can never underspend on energy efficiencies. The more you spend on energy efficiency, it pays back in tenfold. Now, in terms of climate impacts for town in Midland. This next slide is the urban heat island effect. There's a great little tool out of Laval that shows different layers and you can see it and they process satellite imagery and you can see where it's red hot. And it's blue and green was where it's cool. And so Vinden Swamp and Tiffin Forest are cool because they're vast forests. Large parking lots without trees like Heronia Mall, Mountain View Mall or downtown, those are hot and basically we need to start planting trees. Now, the next slide, we're going to start planting some trees. So shout outs to Mitch Sobol. This is an award winning project that town in Midland did and those are pictures from Mitch and those are showing the infiltration galleries that are under the sidewalk. So that's allow for rainwater infiltration, but also allows for root growth and big roots mean big trees. So we're really excited to see the native trees on King Street grow and prosper. The next slide, the town of Midland has taken its Bee City initiative very seriously. And they've done lots of great stuff. Shout out to Karen Mealing and all the great public art that's been out there and all the great artists that have done bee stuff and murals. And we've also had a lot of great efforts in the naturalization efforts. I know councillor Bald and I, we had lots of fun at Ernest T. Bates, ripping out invasive species, planting trees, planting flowers. And the students came over from Sacred Heart, which was just a delight. I know I am running out of time again. I you were right, I had too many slides. Transit and transportation, the next slide is. We're talking about Midland Penetang Transit Agreement tonight, again, amazing initiative and the County of Simcoe has been a huge success. They've shown year over year growth through the pandemic and they're one of the only transit systems in the country that had showed growth through COVID, which is amazing. The next slide is on electric vehicle charging. We're working with staff to identify opportunities to apply to charge on, which is the provincial program or ZVIP or ZEPIP, as some people call it, through the federal government. And so we, as it's Valentine's Day, we like to play matchmaker. We like to try to find grants. We like to find providers. So we're really excited because we found an energy or electric vehicle provider that might be able to provide electric vehicle at zero cost to the town. Pending grants, so we're really excited and hopefully that those grants will come to fruition. And I am out of my time, so let me just quickly wrap up. We're also see there's a lot of great EV charging in the community. At the Midland Courthouse, I know councillor Bald and I have seen lots of people using that on the next slide. And if you. We're also looking at the Operations Center. If you want to just go to the next slide and the Operations Center, we didn't have money at the time to build a solar ready Operations Center. But you see the building in the middle, the one that looks like a USB stick. It's solar ready and so we're working with staff to try to identify. An energy provider to be able to come in and install solar panels, which again would be really beneficial to the town's climate action plan. And the final slide, I know I'm totally over time. Is we've been successful with bringing in some grants, so you can hear that we've got some money from Heroni Community Foundation. Project Seed from Commonwealth and Enbridge was a huge success for us. We got $10,000 to the town of Midland. To pay for your climate action plan initiative in 2023 and seven of. Six other, so seven municipalities were able to get that $10,000. So we were able to bring in 70,000 from Enbridge just last year. So that was an excellent grant opportunity. And with that, I just want to say thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me give you an update on the PCP program and I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Main. That's a lot of information. Anybody on council have any questions? Mayor Gordon.
Thanks for that. I'm impressed. You got through all that. There's a lot of information in there, but anyway. I threw you props, I think, last meeting, talking about trees and your famous quote, or probably not yours, but the one I heard from you constantly for four years. Best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago and the second best time is today. And we actually were talking about that with some of our initiatives and and not cutting the tree planting money from the budget. I think it ended up stayed in there, but we did talk about it. So I'm thinking about other roofs for electrification and solar. The Sports and Rec Center to me seems like a real obvious one. And even, you know, to some degree, the roof of our building, like, why would we exempt ourselves? It may not be as meaningful on this one, but Sports and Rec for sure. Is there, like, when you are engaging these folks? You know, the more square footage that's staring into the sun is probably more appealing to them. So I'm just wondering, have you have you included or is there any, would there be any reason to not include the Sports and Rec Center and maybe just a few panels, token panels in our roof of this building?
But no, it's a great point. And I know you also were talking about a potential generator at that site as well. And so I actually, we have a couple of emails out right now with some different providers. One to look at potentially battery storage on site, but like you're saying, what a great opportunity. I mean, you're going to be taking a look at the roof. So might as well sync up solar installs for that building and so. We are reaching out to try to see what's out there, who has funding, which types of organization. As it turns out, one organization that has a lot of money is Enbridge because as a regulated monopoly, they have all of the money. And so they have different offshoots that we've been reaching out to. Some of them, they package up a deal and then we'll send you a bill. So we're trying to see if those numbers work for us, but it's a great opportunity. So for for sure, we're. We're definitely working with staff to try to identify solar providers for this because it makes sense, especially when you're upgrading a roof to install solar panels at that time. Absolutely.
Thanks. And just further to electric vehicle charging stations, we had an opportunity, a grant that Mr. Flannery had found. And the ask was for $500,000, which was a significant chunk of change in our budget. And it turned out that that was a matching grant. So, you know, if we were successful at 500K. We would get to put charging stations in, we would have to match with 500 and that was a little bridge too far for us as we were trimming the budget this year. So we challenged staff and now it sounds like we may be tapping you on the shoulder too. Find us a deal that's either. You know, more better than a 50 50 deal, maybe 75 25 or better yet 100%. Because part of our challenge is putting these these stations in, of course, is going to be infrastructure. Right? So maybe well and good to get a charging box for free, but if we end up spending a few hundred grand to put the infrastructure in, especially in parking lots that. Will need independent 220 circuits run out to them or whatever it is, three phase. Stuff I don't understand, but they need lots of it and know which means digging the whole place up and running. Maybe new transformers, which are not, they're not giving those away either and they take a long time to get so. Anything that we can come like, I don't think anybody objected to the concept of putting charging stations in in some of our key locations around town, but it was. The cost on the matching on this one grant, it was a bridge too far for us this time, so we're looking for help there and we we sent staff back to look for that, so.
And it's my understanding that three locations have been submitted to the provincial program, the charge one at the end of January 31st. And so the provider that we found, we've targeted a whole, talked to a bunch of different people. And if you are talking with anyone indigenous, with we have Georgia Bay Friendship Center, anyone, we also touched tapped into Indigenous Clean Energy. An organization that they also have additional funding for, but we're not eligible as a non indigenous municipality. So the organization that we found is really exciting and four of our municipalities are working with them on the submission. And what's really sweet is that they will come in and run and operate and deal with all the maintenance costs. And that was excited for municipalities because they're like, we want these EV chargings, but we don't really want to deal with the costs and the maintenance and stuff like that. So we think that we found kind of a really good partner for this and then we're just really hoping that we get some of this EV funding to be able to advance it.
Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to committee and local board delegation or memos. There are none. Reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda. Council's consideration. Include presentations by consultants regarding report under consideration. We have four. Where did they go? So I'm going to need a mover and a second or. Counselor East. Counselor Downer. That staff report CSR-2024-4, Heronia Airport Agreement dated February 14th, 2024 be received for information. Do we have any questions? Counselor Meredith pulled this, so. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure if anybody else pulled it, but I did have some questions. First being. This agreement was, or the commission was established in 1965. And the the Tri-Priority Agreement hasn't been revisited since then, so. I have had read the report and it's and it's nothing really. Nothing that we haven't heard of before, I don't think. I'm pretty pretty sure I've. We've been briefed on this many a time, including into last year's budget where we had a. A discussion when our our hands were tied with. With the funding and so forth, so. What what I'm looking for is either the. If we can come come to the table with our our. Our partners here and rework this agreement. And for us to actually, I know there's there's there's. Some people sitting on the fence, should we be in the airport business or or not? I know. In 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 my opinion. We're not good at being in business, especially in the airport sector and. And I think it's time that we we get together with our our partners and have a discussion, sit at a table and figure out the path we're going to go, whether. There is an opportunity. To come together and 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 sell the airport where it's it's viable, where it can make money if it's privatized. But right now. We're coming back. We're spinning our wheels here, I feel. With the the report that that was in front of me. Reading this report, it didn't really tell us much that we we already knew, so. Is there, for one instance? Do we know that does all three, do all three parties have to be in agreeance if we were going to sell it or if someone wanted? We know what the parameters are if we want it out of 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 the the agreement. But we don't know where everybody stands, so I think a serious, a serious conversation with everybody involved. Needs to be, needs to be had. And especially before we're going into our next budget. Session. I did like though, you know, in fairness, that the new airport manager, you know. At budget time, he 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 has a business model in mind and running it as a business. And as he, as he said, it's not the old boys' club anymore and it's and it's more so trying to. Close the gap of, you know, trying to get to 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 even, I guess. Or maybe somewhat. Turn a profit, but we know that it's going to be hard to do and we've been told that airports don't make money, so. Right now, we own 50%. 28% Penetang, 22% is in tiny, so. If we're going to stay in this, I'd like to see this agreement. Be renegotiated and everybody has have an equal stake in it at least, so. Those are the comments I wanted to make and. But the actual report didn't really. Tell me anything new. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Meredith. Does anybody else have any comments? Mayor Gordon.
Further to Counselor Meredith's. Concerns about revisiting this agreement. I I've had this conversation at the commission that this is likely going to be an output from the council. I'm assuming we. Don't choose the option to hit the ejector seat. We'd likely like to revisit this agreement and maybe revisit the, you know, the funding model, which means the ownership stake. Penetang Machine Council is, I think, of the same mind. They're, they've asked the same request for basically the same report. And they were kind of waiting for the report to hit our council first. And I suspect they're getting a very similar briefing in the coming weeks. So I think it's a little premature to decide what the path forward is yet, unless there's a will by council to hit the eject button right now. The, I can say the next steps would be if Penetang Machine Council also agrees that they'd like to revisit the agreement. The fact that our two shares add up to the majority really don't change anything in this tri-party agreement, where it's a tri-party agreement. The only thing we can do unilaterally is leave. If we want to do anything else, including banging a for sale sign on the front lawn, we have to do that as three partners. So that would be basically then a lobby pressure between Penetang Machine and us. Basically saying, Tiny, guys, like, we want to sell the place or we want to revisit this agreement and try and get them to concede. You know, like, they would end up with a greater ownership stake, which I would argue would benefit them better. They would have to pay a little more, but the money that we really pay to the airport is almost immaterial in the grand scheme of things when you look at how much the land and everything is worth. So to answer your question, Penetang Machine is going to get probably almost a copy of our report in the coming weeks. And then we'll hear what their response is. And then we could, as a council, decide if we want to sort of join forces together and approach Tiny with whatever that option is, which very likely will be revisiting the agreement if Penetang doesn't vote to hit the eject button as well. Or first, as it were. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of background on what the path forward is. I can tell you from being your commissioner at the airport, the board is very live to this. I've been, you know, you know, hands out, hands down, ever since I got there, cards on the table that this council is deeply concerned about the way things were being run and the ongoing costs, and something needed to change. And we've gone through a couple of managers, but Mr. Jewell, as you heard, is really taking a serious run at this as a business model with the objective of self-sufficiency. No, not profitability, but at least, you know, reducing the burden on all the funding partners. And that was his commitment. And as one of the governing body members, I'll be holding him to it. And I know my partners from the other municipalities are too. You know, the mayor from Tiny is equally concerned about the costs and sustainability of this place. So just a little extra color to add for you. Hopefully that helps satisfy you to some degree.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Councillor Ball?
Thank you. Yeah, this report, I mean, we've seen all this before. And I don't see Tiny all of a sudden wanting to pay more to get the same thing. They're, they are the ones getting all the tax revenue from everything right now. And then I don't see them all just saying, yeah, we're going to pay more and give you a share of the tax revenue. I just don't see that happening. That wouldn't be a smart financial decision for them and for their tax residents, especially with such a high tax increase that they had this year. So I honestly would like to look at selling it. I know that when we had a debrief during budget, our share is 50% of the debt, which was around 100,000, which was less money than the ask was to fund this year. So we actually paid more this year than would be for our cost of the debt to exit the airport. So I still would like to look at that avenue. I think that we're not, I would like to see what Mr. Jewell does. We did fund it for this year and go from there, but this report is the same as we've seen, so.
Thank you, Councillor Ball. So this report was received for information only at this time. Can I call the vote? All in favor? Carrie. The next one, can I have a mover and a seconder? Mayor Gordon. Councillor East. That staff report CSR-2024-14, council vacancy dated February 14th, 2024, be received and, one, the council approves option two, filling a vacancy by appointment by the call for the nominees as detailed in the council vacancy policy for the purpose of filling the current vacant councillor seat. That the nominees applicants be required to complete the endorsement of nomination form two as part of the application process. That council direct the clerk to proceed accordingly. Do we have any questions or comments? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I requested that this report be pulled so we could have a bit of a conversation and ensure that we all understand the procedure. And I was going to ask the clerk to briefly review what we can expect and the dates. I did have a concern about March 27th dates, since I think it's important that we're all here when this happens. And I'm in Portugal and I can log in from there. But if the dates could be moved prior to that, it would, well, we'd have an extra council member quicker. And so my questions are directed to the clerk, much to her dismay, I'm sure.
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Councillor McDonald. The first part of your question, as far as the process, it's outlined in detail in the council vacancy policy. But what would happen is we would provide a document for all of council with the names of the applicants listed alphabetically. You'll have boxes where you would check off who you would vote for. We're going to draw names from the hat as far as which member of council goes first to cast their vote, but you do have to do it in open session. And obviously, the first applicant to receive five votes would win. If, if we don't get that the first round, then we have to continue until we do get to a five vote for one of the applicants. If it stays at a tie, then the clerk is required to put the two names in a hat and then I pull the name. So that's, that's how the voting is to go. And the part about having the document with the names and where you check your, your box, you would have to sign that document, submit it to me, because that forms part of the official record of the meeting. Now, if you were to attend virtually, what we could do is you can designate either myself or the deputy clerk. You would state your, who you're voting for. We would fill out the form for you. And then when you get back, you would have to sign the document. So it would, you would still be able to participate remotely in that case for voting. Your second question about the date, it is strategic. And should council agree with my recommendation to go with option two? We do have 60 days starting tomorrow to have someone in place by, well, April 14th, but April 10, council meeting. So the date was chosen so we could advertise for three weeks for the vacancy. And the nomination day would then fall on March 8. They would have, the deadline would be 2 o'clock, similar to elections. You'd have till 2 o'clock on March 8th to file your documentation. Then it would provide the clerk's staff with about a week and a half to get everything in order so that we can have the special meeting of council on March 27th. That's why the date was chosen. If council wanted a, an earlier date, there are some issues. Because the process would be that whoever the successful applicant would be, the bylaw would be passed that night at the special meeting. They would take their oath of office, which the date that we chose was March 27th. So that on April 10th, for the regular meeting of council, they just assume their position as a member of council and the meeting can go on seamlessly. It does put a lot more pressure on the clerk's staff if council were to choose an earlier date in that we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't have as much time to prepare. And we'd have to be careful because some of the dates, because there isn't a meeting on March 20th. If we had a meeting March 13th, then we have till March 20th to have that person in place. And the other reason for the March 27th date would be that if we, you go ahead with that date, that provides us with a little bit of time that perhaps if it's a new member of council who doesn't have experience, then we could at least arrange a little bit of an orientation with each department before they actually attend the council meeting on April 10th. So there was a lot of thought put into the March 27th date. And I hope that answers most of your questions.
Thank you. Just a follow-up. With how, how is it going to be advertised? And will council receive the applications prior to the March 27th meeting to review beforehand? And if there's an interview, if the candidates are here being interviewed, I think that's what it said, correct? And we're all asked, we have, there's a process where we all ask one question. The same question of all the candidates.
Madam Clerk.
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Councillor McDonald. Should council choose or go with my recommendation in tonight's report? We start advertising tomorrow. So we hit the ground running because we do have that 60-day timeline to get everything in place. We have, we've been preparing a package, so the candidates will have certain forms that they need to complete. And although in my recommendation, I am recommending the endorsement form, it's not a requirement. But it is best practice that a lot of municipalities have requested that anybody who wants to run for a vacancy, although it's not required, they should get the 25 signatures. So that's the other addition to the policy. And I forget what your other question was, sorry.
But it's mostly, do we get a chance to review the applications before the meeting?
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Councillor McDonald. As this is a new process, I believe when we prepare the agenda, we do attach the application to the agenda for the meeting, so you will have the information. And essentially, this special meeting of council that will take place is an interview process and everything is discussed in open session. The questions, we do have some standard questions that I will be preparing. And I believe that we may have, we may schedule a training session with council. Once I have, once we know how many applicants there are, once nomination period closes, which would be March 8th, I would like to probably schedule a training session with council just to give an overview of how the meeting is, you know, should flow so that we're all comfortable with the process, as it is a new process for all of us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Carrie. Next one, can I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor East and Councillor Downer. CSR-2024-15, 2023, Culture and Community Year End Summary. That staff report CSR-2024-15, 2022, Culture and Community Year End Summary dated 14th of February, be received for information. Do we have any questions from council? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. And I just wanted to ask a couple of questions on this very informative report. Thank you. It's the, mentioned the new music in the park will be implemented for the summer months in Little Lake. I just wondered, did we have a budget to pay the musicians? And how do they apply and who selects them?
Go ahead.
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Councillor McDonald, yes, the music in the park. As there's a budget to pay the artists through our operating budget, our 2024 operating budget, there will be an application process for musicians. We are creating a new webpage where there'll be an online application form where anyone who's interested can make their submission. We're hoping to do the call for musicians in March or in April. We were waiting on budget approval as well, because there's going to be construction work taking place at the stage this summer. We have to work around the construction dates. So we don't want to put out a call for the musicians until that time. And in terms of selecting the musicians, this year it will be staff in the Culture and Community Department taking that on.
Thank you. Looking forward to that event, if I may, Madam Deputy Mayor. I just have one other question, and I know I've asked this question before. And then I'm saying, what did she say? So I think it was during budget and there was a lot of questions going on, but it's in regards to the, your comment, staff will continue to work with third-party event organizers, looking to host an event on municipal property to ensure the event is appropriate and can be held safely. I just wondered, what was the outcome of us asking for additional assistance with the vendor's application and providing advertising on time town website? And specifically, how does the event become a town-sponsored event? Go ahead.
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Councillor McDonald. Well, yes, we certainly want to see a lot of third-party events happening on municipal property. It is not our responsibility to do the day-to-day organizing of their events. When a third party applies to the town in Midland, town staff review their application to ensure that it adheres to the special event policy, that it is appropriate to take place on municipal property and that the logistics are in place so that it can safely proceed. But the day-to-day operating of a special event is the responsibility of the event organizer. We're always here to answer questions and assist with any, answering any questions or if they have any concerns. However, when the report came to council in January about special events and requests from special third-party events, we outlined some of the considerations that we'd have to take if we were to be involved. One of the main considerations is the liability if we were to be involved. It's not, they're not our events, so we could be taking on a large risk by helping organize any vendors or any components of their event. I think you also were wondering about marketing for them. And we are developed, that report also mentioned that we are developing a midlandtourism.ca website. And third-party events will be able to list their events on that page. The town website will continue to only list town of Midland events. But the community calendar on the town's main website will be an opportunity where people can post their events as well. And when you say town-sponsored events, I'm not sure if you mean if they're looking for financial support or if they're looking for in-kind contributions such as having the fees waived for road closure or for extra picnic tables, for example. And if that's the case, we always direct them to the community grant program. If you're thinking if they wanted, if an event organizer no longer had the capacity to run their event and they wanted the town to take it on, then they would have to, they should write a letter to council requesting that the town event Midland completely takes on their event and they are no longer involved in the organizing of this event. Then council can refer this back to staff and we can do some research and make a recommendation for council's consideration.
Thank you. I'll try and remember this time.
Councillor Ball.
Thank you. And in terms of that community events calendar, I know that we talked about the fact that you were going to let any third party know that they are able to put that event on themselves and that that would be visible on the website that they can add it. So I just wanted to, I guess, a follow-up on that.
Ms. Mealing?
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Councillor Ball, yes. We're always in communication with our third-party event organizers and letting them know how they can market their event through that opportunity.
We'll call the vote. All in favor? That's carried. We have one more. 12.4 CSR-2024-17-ZBA-05-2023 Recommendation Report File, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application Number ZBA-05- Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application Number ZBA dash 05 dash 23. Address 1144 Hugo Avenue. The motion is that staff report CSR 2024 dash 17 Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application for number ZBA dash 05 dash 23 for 1144 Hugo Avenue dated February 14th, 2024 be received. And that zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA dash 05 dash 23 to rezone the lands at 1144 Hugo Avenue from highway commercial to highway commercial exemption. Zone be approved and the implementing the zoning bylaw, bylaw 2024 dash 11 as shown in attachment number three be passed. Any questions from counsel? Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. I, I did pull the report. We did have the, the client's representative speak with us at our last council meeting, I believe. So we took that, I took that as information and then I just have a comment now on coming back to the parking issue of decreasing the parking spots by, I think it was like 12. From 101, 13 to 101. A little concerned with that, given the nature of that area and how, how congested it gets. Especially with the new, the new coffee Starbucks being up there and so forth. So my, and I read the report and it, it does say in the report about the conference space. There's a restriction on that to the, it's the in-house guests only. The one thing on the report, the spill over parking. And the question I've had is, do the, the commercial tenants around the, this party's property? Have they been, are they aware, I know at the time of the, the last meeting that no one actually had, had, had any, had voiced any concerns, their neighbors? Has anybody since then voiced any concern over that spill over parking? I imagine with being a restaurant. And if the, the hotel is at full capacity and then there's a seating for over 100, 125 or so. Even half of those, if half of, half of the people come by car, that's another 60 some odd cars. And that, that'll be, you're, you're looking at 100, like you said, 13, 14, 15. So there'll be some spill over parking. So my concern is on, on those properties as, is there going to be something in this that there is a sign off for those properties to, so they're actually aware of that there might be some spill over parking on their, on their property? Could Mr. Farquharson?
Mr. Farquharson.
Through you Deputy Mayor. So staff, as part of the public meeting, we do our normal circulation so everybody within 120 meters gets notice that an application has been submitted. After the public meeting, I did reach out to the owner of the Canadian Tire as well as the owner of the medical building, as those are the two properties that we, we feel would probably be the most impacted for, for spill over. And we did just say, you know, heads up, there is this application here, here's the link to our webpage. Where it lists all the materials, shows us, shows the plans, the studies and everything that was completed. To date, we have not received anything back from them. That is why, so staff, I, I think the concern for when we look at it, it's probably more likely that people would park in the, in the Canadian Tire parking lot. And this was witnessed when I did do a site visit on, on the property where we saw someone park at Canadian Tire and literally walk across into the hotel and then into their room. So to discourage it, that's why staff are recommending that a decorative fence be put up. We don't want to see, you know, a wood type board fence there. We don't want that. We want it to, to, to look nice and aesthetically pleasing. So the black decorative fence that we're proposing along that lot line, we think it will help deter parking from going there. However, it, I don't think will completely eliminate it. If there is a parking issue on there, it is private property. So the Canadian Tire property owner or the medical building or where the, the Starbucks is or even the A and W, if there's, if there's, if there's parking occurring on those properties that the, those landlords feel that those cars are not visiting their businesses, they can pursue their own enforcement for that. So for example, if someone's parked at the Canadian Tire parking lot overnight and Canadian Tire needs to do storm removal in the middle of the winter and there's a car parked there and obviously it's not someone that's in the, in the store at 2:00 AM. Canadian Tire has that ability to, to tow the vehicle or do whatever they're, it is private property. We just felt by putting the fence up along that particular lot line, it'll help deter people. Because now they'll have to walk around the fence to get to the restaurant. We didn't include it on the medical side building because the lot, the, that yard is going to be very narrow. Because that, that landscaping strip that's there right now is going to be removed and there's going to be parking all along that one side. So we felt it would be probably pretty hard to fit a fence in there. And you're more likely to get the people park at the Canadian Tire because it's more front facing towards the restaurant entrance. So that's why we, we only suggested on that one proper, that one law line there. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I can fill in more if you'd like, Counselor Meredith.
Counselor Meredith.
Yeah, thank you. No, it, it does answer my question and you answered my other question about why stop the fence? You know, at Canadian Tire. But yeah. So basically, there'll be no burden to town staff if there's issues that come up. This is, this is, I'm, I'm sure there, there may be complaints coming, you know, you'll be answering calls, but at the end of the day, you're, you're, well, you could answer it. I'm not going to answer it for you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Before we continue, I need a mover and a seconder to put this on the floor. Counselor Downer and Counselor Ball. Sorry about that.
Through, through you Deputy Mayor. I have no doubt that we will get calls. When the Canadian Tire did their addition, they went through the committee of adjustments for a reduction of, I believe, 100 spaces in parking. Now, the reason why that went through the committee of adjustment was because the addition was mainly warehousing. It wasn't to do with, it wasn't going to increase the number of patrons to the store. It was more so the storage and the warehousing of the property. So Canadian Tire went through the variance process. As far as I know, we haven't gotten any calls about reductions in parking there and people parking overflow. But if we do get calls from Canadian Tire, we will tell them it's, it's a, it's a private issue. It's private property. We don't enforce it. It's not like the hospital that the mayor pointed out in, in our last council meeting where we have an agreement with the hospital that we go in and do enforcement on private property there. So I have no doubt we will get phone calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we call the vote? Oh, oh, sorry. Mayor Gordon has something.
Thanks. I just wanted to speak to this, the compromises that staff made around this. You can see that there initially were quite a few issues and we always want to welcome more business to the, the community, of course, employment. You know, there's all these things. We don't want to stand in the way of growth, but there's still rules that have to be followed and we have policies. And so I, I met with the, the proponents on this early on and, you know, introduced them to our, our capable staff. And they've worked the, they worked the issues out. And you look at that sort of laundry list of the compliance issues and compromises were made all along by both staff and the proponent. And so that's a, that's the signal that I just want to, you know, echo out to the development community. This is what you can expect in Midland now. You, you will find us. I mean, we're not just rolling over on everything, but we will work with you to get through the process. Find compromises that make sense, that don't undermine other planning applications and, and compromise the town. But they're reasonable compromises that we're making on both sides here. So I, I like to see this. Because I know from when Canadian Tire's parking lot, even before that it shrunk, a lot of people park in the medical center. And you know, you don't see the Code Jacamos, you know, complaining to us about that parking lot being full of people walking across the little strip of grass to go to Crappy Tire, or Canadian Tire, sorry. I shop there a lot. I have their credit card. So yeah, sorry, I couldn't call them that, more than just tires. But long and short of is this kind of overflow, people parking where they can to get to the local businesses happens all over town. So the fact that we're putting actually a caveat and a financial burden on, on the proponents in this case to put up a fence is rather unique because there's plenty of places in town where this happens where we didn't require that. So the fact that they're willing to carry that shoulder of the costs, that speaks to their willingness to compromise too, to get this planning application done and get their restaurant built and hire people and start feeding and, you know, watering people at the, the new Schule's Joe's, I think it is, or something like that that's coming in. Yeah. So anyways, really exciting. Happy to see this. I'm glad you guys were able to work it out and I look forward to the, through the site plan process and, and seeing this place built and going for breakfast one day because it is a short walk from my house. So anyway, that's all. Good work, guys.
Let me call the vote. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, number 13 on your agenda, notice of, notice, notice to him talk, notices of motion. Does counsel have any notices of motion to put forward at this time? Seeing none? Oh, apologize again. Counselor Downer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to propose that not for this year. But for next year, we run the Butter Tart Festival for a weekend instead of one day. And to explore what it would cost and how much extra work it would be. But I think it would be worthwhile for the community, for the hotels, the restaurants. And get people to, and showcase our town for, for the two days instead of the one. So I'm putting a motion forward that we have staff look at some kind of a costing. And if it's, if it's not viable, that's fine too, but I think we should, we should take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Downer. Madam Clerk, are you doing that now? Thank you. Okay, moving on to number 14, general announce, announcements. Does anybody have any general announcements this evening? Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would just like to announce that I was, I've been working very hard this week. The, 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 eh, thank you. Three meetings with the, oh, good Lord, I spent with them so often, I can't even remember their names. What committee is my? So come on, Act, Active Transportation, there was a couple of meetings there and they, they are very active. They're coming up with some excellent ideas and the Culture Alliance Committee, three meetings with that. And I had the honor of witnessing or attending the county council meeting again. So, but I, I just want to share with you that the Culture Alliance is, is being very positive. They're planning a conference in May and they're planning their indigenous events. I think that's in September, but I'll, I'll keep you posted and while there are minutes come across. Anyway, that's my woes today.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Anybody else? Mayor Gordon.
Always count on me for announcement or two. I only got one. Baby, it's cold outside and it's cold out there and it truly is. And February 24th is the coldest night of the year fundraiser. This is the big one for homeless shelters all across Canada. We have, of course, we host the county funded shelter called the Guest House Shelter downtown Midland. And a big part of their funding, almost 30% of it, I believe, comes from private fundraising. The rest comes from the county, AKA our pockets, right, through taxes and whatnot. But they rely on that, the gap to be made up through private fundraising and the CNLY or Coldest Night of the Year is their biggest one. So it's a, there's a couple of walks that you can do, the short walk or the long walk. You get a tuk, probably some chili and some coffee and tea. And you can, you can sponsor me, you can sponsor your own team, you can set your own team up. If you visit, you know, my, my Facebook page or my website, you'll see a link to sponsor me through my council team. Regardless, if you find it in your heart and to give to the, to the Coldest Night of the Year campaign, you're really helping out the shelter. For the people that, you know, are maybe less than impressed with the state of things downtown, for example, where people who choose not to avail themselves of a shelter or some of the struggles the shelters had with being open and having staff and having programming during the day, which has resulted in some of the problems we've had downtown. Changes are happening. There are more funds and more funds, like literally bags of money are being dumped on the shelter right now with accountability to make sure things happen. More supports from the county, which I'd love to tell you about right now, but I can't spoil the alert, spoiler alert you. So that's going to happen in the next month. We'll see Mina from the county and Guest House here launching some amazing initiatives that are going to be coming our way. But that doesn't replace Coldest Night of the Year. So my point is, on February 24th, if you can make it out to the Guest House Shelter, bring some cash, bring your feet, dress yourself warmly, sponsor me if you can't make it or sponsor anyone, any other groups. And give generously, please, because the Guest House Shelter desperately needs those funds to continue to operate. And there's good stuff on the horizon, some really exciting news coming in the next couple of months with outreach and expansion. Not the kind of expansion you initially would have thought. It's really, really exciting. I, I know, I just, I'm dying to say it, but anyway, I won't. They need money. They always will. It's a, it's a yearly ask. February 24th is Coldest Night of the Year. Please sponsor and please consider coming out. It's a, it's really important to the unhoused and the marginally housed in our community who desperately rely on this resource. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon, or Mayor Gordon. Okay, we're on number 15 on the agenda, my grand finale. Motion to close the committee of the whole and resume the formal council session. I have a motion here. It's moved by Counselor Bald and seconded by Counselor McDonald that the committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? It's carried.
There you are. You pulled off your first committee of the whole. Good for you. Your deputations and all.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor Ball. The recommendations, the committee of the whole for the meeting of February 14th, 2024 be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Imposed. It's carried. Okay, I got a long winded one here. However, because I moved it, I give it to the deputy mayor to read. So sorry. We're at the motions for which notice was given. This is a motion for which notice was given. It's my motion, therefore I'm handing the chair over to Deputy Mayor.
And I just started breathing. So this is moved by Mayor Gordon, seconded, do I have a seconder? Counselor Meredith. Whereas current provincial municipal fiscal arrangements are undermining Ontario's economic prosperity and quality of life. Whereas nearly a third of municipal spending in Ontario is for services and areas of provincial responsibility and expenditures are outpacing provincial contributions by nearly $4 billion a year. Whereas a municipal revenue, municipal revenues such as property taxes do not grow with the economy or, or inflation. Whereas unprecedented population and housing growth will require significant investments in municipal infrastructure. Whereas municipalities are being asked to take on complex health and social challenges like homelessness, supporting asylum seekers and addressing the mental health and addictions crisis. Whereas inflation, rising interest rates and provincial policy decisions are sharply constraining municipal fiscal capacity. Whereas property taxpayers, including people on fixed incomes and small businesses, can't afford to subsidize income redistribution programs for these most in need. Whereas the province can and should invest more in the prosperity of communities. Whereas municipalities of the provincial government have a strong history of collaboration. Therefore, be it resolved that the province of Ontario commit to undertaking with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, a comprehensive, comprehensive social economic prosperity review to promote the stability and sustainability of municipal finances across Ontario. to promote the stability and sustainability of municipal finances across Ontario. And further that, a copy of this motion be sent to the Premier of Ontario, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Minister of Finance, and to the Association of Municipal Ontario.
Thank you very much for, sorry, it was so long-winded, but there's a lot in there. And effectively, I'm asking council to add our voice to the chorus with the AMO, calling on the government for more supports. The downloading, you know, as much as you hear the province complaining about the downloading from the feds, well, hey, we're the bottom, right? Everything trickles down. We are taking a beating, and as we just saw, as we labored through our budget, there are so many things that we need to fund for our local municipality and tough decisions we have to make about things that maybe we can't continue funding without outsider help. That outsider could either be our neighboring municipalities. We work so wonderfully together, but when you ask for big chunks of money, all of a sudden, it's, you know, they're in the same boat as us. We need the province to do and fund the things that the province is really responsible for. And we haven't really talked publicly about the enormous ask that's going to be coming to build the new GBGH. But I can tell you, sneak peek, it's around $10 million they're going to be looking for from Midland alone to go towards that build. And building hospitals, the actual framing and building of hospitals is a hundred percent provincial responsibility. The stuff inside of it ironically is us. But anyway, there's big, 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 big spending that's beyond our capacity. And this isn't just a Midland problem. This is happening all over the province. So this long-winded motion lays out all of the complex challenges that everyone's having. And it's, they're effectively asking us, all 444 of us, because we're 444 again, since Peel's no longer going to be led to the gallows. The, they're asking all of us to really commit to this and raise our voices. So that's what this motion is. I didn't write this. This is a copy and paste. But it's part of the initiative that goes out to heads of councils throughout the province, and they're certainly encouraging us all to endorse it unaltered in its current state. So here it is in Midland.
Council McDonald?
I'm certainly in favor of the motion, but I would like to add that Jill Dunlop also be copied or MP. If that's possible.
I'd accept that friendly amendment.
Anybody else?
We'll just, if you could hand right in, just on the bottom of that, well, that'll be good enough. We'll make that amendment.
So I'll call the vote. All in favor? Carrie? Back to you, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you very much. Adaptly handled there. So next I have a motion for which notice was given, moved by Counselor Easton and a second to get it on the floor. Counselor Ball. Whereas the town of Midland and the town of Penetang machine continually seek to improve transit awareness and ridership within their municipalities. And whereas the promotion of both transit services will help encourage residents to use transit and foster growth and ridership. Be it resolved that the councils of the town of Midland and the town of Penetang Machine declare the second Saturday in June, Butter Tart Saturday, Transit Awareness Day. Finally, be it resolved that all transit services operated by both Midland and Penetang Machine be free of charge on Transit Awareness Day. AKA No One Has Butter Tart Day, as it happens. Counselor East, this is your motion. Let you speak to it. It's pretty self-explanatory, but you probably have something to add.
Thank you through your worship. Yeah, so the thought process behind this was so that we could educate our communities and expand the growth of our transit system by knowledge. You know, by providing a free service, one day especially, the Butter Tart Day, we're able to essentially move Midland and Penetang around to visit this and get used to our transit services and hopefully expand those transit services and make it more well-known. By doing this, we have the ability to provide services for students, elderly, families to move along. It's just a great way to really explore how we can build on the transit system and educate our community more on it. So that was the thought process behind it, and it just so happens that we floated it on the Butter Tart Weekend. So it's a great way for Midland and Penetang to get downtown Midland and back home absolutely free.
A quick question for staff. This wouldn't replace the shuttle service that we all see as our buses for, that we get sponsorship funds for? This is in addition to? Okay, that's got nods. Perfect. Counsel Meredith?
Thank you through Mayor Gordon to Ms. Mealing. I guess, well, I'm not sure on the numbers of ridership on transit through Butter Tart. I believe it's probably high. Is there a do we have a breakdown on cost, what that revenue would look like on Butter Tart or?
Through Mayor Gordon to Counsel Meredith, I would have to check with our facilities manager and transit and facilities manager on the ridership numbers. I don't have those numbers. I do know that, in addition to, yes, we have free shuttles that day and free transit that day. And we also have, hopefully, Penetang Machine will run their shuttle between Penetang Machine and Midland that day as well. Anything that we can do to it's, yeah, it's, yeah, so anything that we can do to ease the congestion in the downtown with the number of people coming in and provide them with wonderful, great opportunities to get in the downtown. We also have Cycle Simco come, and they have a bike valet. So there's different ways to encourage people to come to the festival.
Just to follow up, I just had, I had to ask the question if we were giving up revenue. But since it's already free, we're not giving anything up. So that's why I had to ask the question. Thank you.
Nothing wrong with that. It's more just about awareness. It's another day to market and promote. So get people using our awesome transit system. Any other questions? All right, call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Next, moved by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Ball again. First hand I saw. The councils support the counties of Simco's initiatives in providing affordable housing and that staff provide a report to council with respect to surplus lands. Counselor East, take it away.
Thank you through your worship again. We have the County of Simco that is already floating this small tiny house project. And what my feeling or my thoughts was is that the town of Midland could look at some surplus land and show the County of Simco, or the Habitat for Humanity, or in this case, this evening, Housing North Simco, that we would be on board and we're coming to the table to find ways to streamline and get small houses built, affordable housing built. And I know that there is no way that taxpayers can float this cost to build these houses. We got the numbers tonight on just, you know, a few of them. But I think that if we were able to provide, you know, some of these charities or even the County of Simco, because I know the County of Simco wants to move forward with housing. They're really trying to find ways to make this happen. I just felt that if we could look at a report and look at some surplus lands, we could approach the County of Simco and say, okay, you know what? We're listening to you. You want to do something? Well, we want to do something as well. We're looking at some land. We're going to offer it up to you and see what we can work as a partnership to be able to expand tiny houses, affordable houses into Midland. My original thought process was through the County of Simco, of course, because they seem to be the ones that are really spearheading and really challenging this. But I mean, even Habitat for Humanity and Housing North Simco really made good points tonight. So that's what I'm asking is just a report to see if there's any surplus lands that we could look at and find a way to partnership up with, especially the County of Simco, and say, here we are. We want to help families in need, and this is what we need to look at and find a way to see if we can work together on this.
Perfect. And as we heard earlier in our discussion, they'll be, we are participating in what I colloquially call the housing lottery with the county. We missed the boat last term, but we are submitting proposal, at least one to the county. So Mr. Farquharson, maybe you could, I believe the report you said is coming at our next meeting, but you may have something to add on this.
Through your worship, yeah. So we will have a report to council for the next council meeting. Now, the CFP process of the county closes March 1st. So should council decide to proceed, we'd have to get our proposal developed fairly quickly. But through our meeting with the county, it's, they want a lot of things at a discounted price being free. So the report, when it comes back, will give council an overview of what those costs and what those incentives that the county is going to be looking for. When I was with the township of Tay, we were successful in getting an affordable housing project in Victoria Harbour. And we had to provide a lot of incentives to the county to get that, including donation of land, exemption of building permit fees, development charges. So we will summarize all that for the county. There is one property in particular the county has talked to me about that will be in my report, and I'll have the estimates on there. They've given me roughly a unit count that I can generate some numbers with our CFO to, so council is aware of what that potential cost could be that the county is looking for incentives on. Thank you.
Counsel Meredith?
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Gordon threw you to Mr. Farquharson. We did receive a map of some town lands that were declared surplus. I think Mr. Reichhold provided that us since September 6th of 2023. I don't think much is, there might be a few properties that have sold by then. I think the one on Williams Street, if it did. Anyways, in that report, would you, would you suggest? Right now on my map, I see about eleven. But would you specify which lands the staff would recommend for this type of initiative?
Through your worship. So what my report will do for the county CFP is it'll narrow down. I've got one property for sure, and then a couple of more. The report that I think you're looking for would be a lot more properties. There's a certain criteria that the county looks for for these affordable housing projects. And some of the properties that we have deemed surplus may not meet those criteria. So I think the report that Counselor East is looking for will be a separate report. But you'll have mine as well, which is looking at the county CFP and a couple of properties that we're considering putting forward to them. So yes, there will be a separate report that'll look at all those properties. And since I've been here, I've seen reports come forward and through discussions with various departments on what the zoning is, because they've included planning in it. So that'll be a separate report that we can have come forward.
Counsel Ball?
Thank you. I would like to see this report. I know people are probably concerned about us giving away land that could be going towards, you know, capital reserves for lowering a tax rate within ten-year time when we're looking at that extensive timeline of underfunding each house. I think it was $900 a household each year. We're underfunding our capital reserves. But Counselor McDonald and I actually did see more alarming stats, which were from the Health Unit, which is the amount of people that are on the poverty line and on the line of becoming homeless within Midland itself. And the numbers are staggeringly high. So I think that if we don't look at, look, us bringing something to the table and allowing to build affordable housing, we're going to have a much bigger issue than the small percentage we would put towards capital reserves. Like, there's a staggeringly high number of people that are going to become homeless in the next few years, and we need to get ahead of that.
All right, any other questions? Well, call the question and look forward to that report. All those in favor? That's carried. Next one, moved by Counselor Post, seconded by Counselor East. That the following bylaws, bylaw 2024-11, amend zoning bylaw 2004-90 is amended for the lands described as part of east half of Lot 106 and part of Lot 107, concession one, being disappointingly known as 1144 Hugo Avenue. And bylaw 2024-12, establish a municipal heritage committee and amend the approved terms of reference and to repeal bylaw 2018-71. And bylaw 2024, establish rates for water and sewer service related to the operation of systems and to repeal bylaw 2023-7. And lastly, bylaw 2024-14, which is repealing bylaw 93-14, be passed and enacted. This is our end of the meeting massive bylaws. Perhaps, because it is, the last one's a little ambiguous. We're repealing bylaw 93-14. Madam CEO, maybe you could just speak to what exactly that was we're appealing, just for those following along at home? And perhaps for us up here?
Through your worship? So the bylaw and the bylaw, the final bylaw that you're speaking about, 2024-14, is for 150 Albert Street? And the reason for the repeal of the bylaw is, and actually, sorry, I just the repeal of the bylaw is for a couple of reasons. We are trying to, as you know, clean up bylaws and come forward with with the update numbers to show the 2024. So in the past, we have added on to bylaws. So we'll have a 2005 and add on to bylaws. And then and then come forward with different revisions. And our new methodology will be to repeal bylaws and put a new number. I may pass it along to, for additional information, to Ms. Ellery for additional information on that.
Certainly, thanks. I know we are trying to do some upkeep, and rather than just keeping the really dated bylaw numbers and adding or changing something, we're giving it a new number, so it doesn't look like it's been abandoned for 20 years. But please go ahead.
To you, your worship. This bylaw repeal is to do with an issue that we spoke of at last council meeting in closed session. And it's repealing a bylaw that had been put into place that we discussed and that it was agreed should be repealed to clean up title. Hopefully that answers.
Ah, yes, okay, we all remember that one now. Very good. Yep, nothing to see here, folks, but seriously, it's just, this is more just tidying things up. Literally. Okay. Any questions on this? All those in favor? All right, that is carried. Moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor Bald. That bylaw, 2024-15, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting held February 14, 2024, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? And that is carried. And last but not least, moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Meredith, that this regular meeting of council adjourn at 8:08 PM. Almost a record. All those in favor? Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Thank you very much.